So, welcome.
Hello.
Appreciate you being here, as with the other presenters. If you don't mind taking a minute to introduce yourself and the group that you represent, maybe 10 minutes or so on what you'd like to communicate to us, and then save the last 20 minutes or so, if you don't mind, to allow us to ask questions and dialogue with you. We would really appreciate that. So with that, please take it away and welcome.
Okay, thank you. And you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. And aloha from the beautiful state of Hawaii, everyone. I wish you could have your board meeting out here someday. But it is a beautiful day out here.
We look forward to that someday.
Yes. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to testify today. My name is Joe Kent, and I'm the Executive Vice President of the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, a nonprofit public policy research organization that educates about individual liberty, economic freedom, and accountable government. So we're essentially a taxpayer watchdog group that closely looks at government budgets, and we try to educate taxpayers about the financial burdens that governments place upon them. So I'm not a CPA, I'm not a, you know, a deep financial expert. I'm just a humble user of government financial reports, and I try to glean information from financial documents in order to help taxpayers better understand their government in Hawaii. So I want to thank you all in your role in helping us hold the government accountable, and to look at the government's books, and to seek transparency. So thank you. It's an important role that you have. I do this because Hawaii has among the highest costs of living in the nation, and among the highest rates of taxation in the nation. And that trend has been worsened over the years by out-of-control government spending. In fact, in the past 10, Hawaii has a constitutional spending limit, and Hawaii lawmakers have exceeded that limit to the tune of $1.4 billion over the past decade. And so we're spending a lot, and of course, it's not GASP's job to set budgeting standards for governments. So if budgets are going to budget badly, then they'll budget badly, unfortunately. But we hope that GASP's standards in financial reporting can at least help us be a check against governments who use the rationale of a surplus budget to keep the spending spree going without having to account for the long-term liabilities. So take Hawaii, for example. Lawmakers regularly tout the general fund surplus to show that the budget is balanced with room to spare, and the newspapers splash this headline, "A Huge Surplus." This concept of a surplus ignores often the concept of unfunded liabilities for which lawmakers often choose to make the minimum payment and long-term debt. So we're concerned that the current proposals to place a short-term focus on the government fund statement will continue to enable lawmakers to keep pointing at the surplus and without having to account for the long-term liabilities. And then lawmakers continue to spend money on PEP projects while unfunded liabilities increase or go unpaid. And this has enabled a spending trend that has created a government in Hawaii that, over the past decade, spends faster than the growth of our economy, which, as you know, is an unsustainable trend. These financial burdens have raised the cost of living and pushed many residents out of the islands. In fact, since 2016, 22,000 residents have, on net, have left the state. So people are fleeing the state's high taxes and high cost of living. We, at the Grassroots Institute, reached out to many of these residents who left in our series, "Why We Left Hawaii." And one person, Nate Hara, told us, "I lived in Hawaii until I was 26. The cost of living and continuous raising of taxes and fees, and the state's need to control everything led to me and my family moving to Texas." We catalogued over 50 of these stories, and we tried to understand what was the main reason, and our survey showed that the main reason is because of the cost of living and the cost of job opportunities. But Hawaii lawmakers, every year, have gotten away with raising the cost of living by imposing more debt and taxes on the population, enabled partial by their ability to keep residents in the dark about the true financial picture. So for example, when the pandemic hit last year, Hawaii lawmakers decided to take an OPEB holiday, and so they decided to skip the annually required contribution, pre-funded payments into the state health benefits fund, and say that, and they created this huge surplus. We were actually amazed at the Grassroots Institute that, right when the pandemic hit, right when all tourism fell and the state's finances collapsed, the lawmakers seemed to pull a rabbit out of the hat and say, "Look at this, we've got a billion-dollar surplus." And now lawmakers are attempting to keep that OPEB holiday going for the next five years, which we calculate will save $2 billion in the short term, but costs $8 billion in the long term. So lawmakers are saying, "Look, we have a windfall of $2 billion if you just look at the short-term budget." And that is concerning, because as lawmakers tout that money, taxpayers need to be made aware that there's actually, we're going to see more debt in the system beyond anything we've ever seen in the state. Hawaii's state general fund statements, I mean, the budget, you know, the budget statements that they create are good to look at, but they're unreliable solely in understanding the true liabilities and financial burdens, and that's why we look at the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and why that's so important to us, because it provides an independent way of checking the books. Another confusing issue is that Hawaii, for the first time in history, is taking out general obligation bonds to pay for salaries. This is the first time we're doing this, $750 million that we're taking out in debt, and it's placed in the budget as revenues, and it's being used to balance the state budget. Now, with respect to the CAFR, or excuse me, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, I'm just confused as to whether this debt will be counted as revenue or inflows on the government fund statement, because in my view, that would skew the true picture of the state's financial health. And furthermore, it's unclear about how to account for bond swaps, and that's another thing lawmakers did. They spun up, they took out money from all the special funds and poured it into the general fund and replaced it with bond proceeds. These bond swaps helped enable lawmakers to shift money around to build the huge surplus that we see today. And now we have many special interest groups looking at that surplus and saying, "We want the money." And so lawmakers are under enormous pressure to give the surplus away to favored groups. So we think that a true look at the finances using full accrual accounting and the governmental fund statement would show a budget, a truer picture of the budget, and it would enable me and many other residents to decide, "Do we want to stay here in Hawaii? Are my kids going to be burdened more in the future?" And so we ask that GASP reconsider these statements in light of this view. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate that. Brian, who's the first question? Go, Brian.
Joe, thank you for being with us here today. I think that more, I may not be the only member of the GASP that would want to probably talk more about your environment there than Hawaii than the financial reporting model here, but I'll set that aside for the moment. So there are a number of reasons why we haven't approached the model with an Economic Resources Measurement focus, but I want to set that aside for a moment. I'm going to ask you a question that I've, I asked the prior testifier. That is, that arguably with our current financial reporting model, we've got three sets of financial statements in the report. You've got a budgetary basis, we've got some form of short-term basis currently called the Current Financial Resources Measurement Focus, Proposed Short-Term Financial Resources Measurement Focus, and we have the government-wide statements on the Economic Resources Measurement Focus Full Accrual. So the information is certainly there to show how the full condition, financial condition of a government. If we were to take away that centerpiece that some governments use for budgeting, but some don't, that center, that center portion, that some form of short-term focus, and we're left with budget and Economic Resources Measurement Focus at the government-wide level, is that going to change anything? Or are governments still going to just turn to the, and legislators turn to the budgets, budget numbers and say, "Well, now we'll look at these"?
Joe, you're muted, I think.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. I think doing that would take away an opportunity of lawmakers to point at the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and say, "Look at the surplus." If they only have to look at their own budget and laws, yes, you're right, they could still say that we have a huge surplus and keep selling that to the media and to special interest groups and so on. So, you know, there's no way to fix bad budgeting, like I said, but I do think that doing it this way would be a step in the right direction, and it would at least remove the ability for lawmakers to point at that, at the government financial document and say, "Oh, look, look at the huge surplus, everyone."
Well, maybe one other question, and that is that if we did go with the Economic Resources Measurement Focus, we'd be backtracking a bit, but if we did do that at the fund level, one of the concerns with that is the cost that we would impose on small governments. Larger governments, like one of my last venues, probably could handle it, but with some of the smaller governments, aren't we going to be imposing some significant costs? And isn't that also going to drive up the cost to your government and make government more expensive in Hawaii?
Well, that's a good point. So we don't want wasteful spending, but I would argue that this would not be wasteful spending. In fact, if you spend a dollar to save a dollar, or to save $2, then that's a dollar well-spent. And so if this increased the costs but helped to provide taxpayers and groups like ours with a truer metric, then so be it. And I know it's, sometimes things are difficult to count. They say, "Not everything that counts can be counted, and not everything that can be counted counts." But you have to try your best, and I think governments can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Joe, I'd like to go back to Brian's point before we went to the small governments and go to the three bases and explore this middle one. You know, governments exist to provide, to take a group of people in an area and provide services to them that it couldn't or shouldn't maybe be provided by the private sector: education, transportation, public safety, things like that, right? And so they do that by taxing those citizens and then spending the money on those services. And so that middle financial statement, that short-term perspective of, one of its main purposes is to show how those tax resources came in during that year and how they were used, the sources coming in and the sources going out. If we lost that, if we took those to that full Economic Resources Measurement Focus, information that already exists at the government-wide statements, yes, we would be losing a place that a legislature could point to, right? But we would be also losing that benefit of a statement that gives taxpayers that inflows and outflows look at a government, thereby, you know, are we losing transparency, some of the transparency that exists in the financial statements, just at the, just for the benefit of avoiding that pointing that a legislature might do? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, thank you for the question. I think that we all have our different lenses of how we view things. I view it the other way around. In fact, I think there are many government public services that could be provided by the private sector. I was a public school teacher for eight years, and I do think that, you know, the private sector, it could be done where they provide public services too. And when it went and if they did, then they may not use the GASP standards, they might use the FASB standards as a private company. And in fact, there are many governments across the nation who provide private, or excuse me, public services, like Hawaii. We provide more public services than any state. We've got a public hospital system, a government-run airport system, and so on, and in other states, these are all provided by the private sector. So I don't know if there's anything special about governments that we have to do it this way. I see it the other way around, where we lose transparency by not having the full picture of all the liabilities and assets in the, in the statements. So, yeah, it's just a different view, I guess.
And right, the services could come and go. Maybe some would argue public safety is one that you might not want to privatize, but sure, right. But the idea still is that there's some accounting, and also that that kind of transparency of full-picture liabilities and that stuff exists. It exists now and will continue to exist at that government-wide statement. So it's there, but I'll pass it on to the next question and let Jim go. He's been waiting patiently. Go ahead, Jim.
Joe, thank you very much for your participation in the hearing and in our process. I think this, at least in the nine years I've been on the board, this is the first time that your group's actually participated, and I certainly appreciate that, and the more diverse viewpoints and more diverse geographic representation we can get, the better informed we are. A part of the proposal deals with the reporting of budgetary information, including differences between actual and budget, and original budget, final budget, and so on. One of the pieces of the existing model requires explanation of significant budgetary variations in management's discussion and analysis, and the proposal would move, continue to require that discussion, but would move it to being a part of the presentation of the actual budgetary information presentation. So the explanation would be with that presentation. I wondered if you had any opinion on whether you think that's a good change or an undesirable change, and why?
Oh, well, I am embarrassed to say that question's a bit beyond me. I wish I could be more ready for that question, but just, I'm not a CPA, I'm not a deep financial expert, I'm just a casual user of the, of these reports, so I apologize.
Well, I appreciate that. I was asking from your perspective, as a casual user, is it easier if you find the information in one place, or if you have to go multiple places to put it together?
Oh, I see. I see. Thank you. That's, thank you for putting it in my language. Yes, it's easier if it's in one place. If I have to hunt and peck and look for a reconciliation and then cross-check the math, and actually, I have tried to do that, look at the government budget and try to look at their bottom line, and then try to look at the CAFR budget, and in fact, when I was trying to calculate the, whether Hawaii's government has grown faster than the local economy adjusted for inflation, that's a complex calculation, and I looked at the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the State General Fund and the Total Fund, and I did it three different ways, and even within the CAFR itself, it was difficult to figure out which number should I use in looking at that concept. So, so yes, it'd be much easier if it was all in one place.
Thank you.
Diane?
Joe, thank you for being here, and I also wish we were meeting in Hawaii instead of virtual, too. I just had a question for you. You talked a lot about pensions and long-term debt, and all of those things are captured on the government-wide financial statements. Why do you think that the policymakers and just, you know, general citizens are not using that information?
Oh, I think they are using the information, and I totally respect and honor GASP's, GASP for requiring that information to be on the government-wide financial statements. I'm just concerned that the governmental fund statements could be used to easily mislead the public now, or mislead lawmakers themselves who are trying to read it. And even when I look at it, I'm looking at the general, you know, I'm a smart person. I try to go to the bottom line and look at the general fund statement, and I see a surplus, and I had to ask around and finally figure out, "Oh, wait, there's this reconciliation page as well." And so it was difficult even for me to find that. So I know, and if I had flipped to a few pages earlier, I might have seen that, but I don't have time for all these details. I just need to look at the bottom line, and I think that's what most people do, too.
So just as a follow-up, as you mentioned the reconciliation, and I asked Sheila this question about, are there changes that we could make to make it clearer on the reconciliation that you could pull out that information that you're looking for and still maintain what both Joel and Brian talked about, those three different statements, the budget, the short term, and then the government-wide?
Perhaps, and I think that, I like what Dr. Kevin Bronner mentioned, is you could, there's different ways to do a reconciliation. So you could have a full accrual accounting for the governmental funds, and then if you wanted to do another accounting method with a reconciliation, you could add that as a supplement. So that may at least be clearer and more consistent when scrolling through the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha, Joe.
Oh, aloha!
Aloha! So seeing as to how Diane has brought us to the government-wide financial statements, I have a question for you regarding those. So right now, the statement of net position has three components of net position, right? So we talk about the component, that's the net investment in capital assets. We talk about the restricted net position component, and then, of course, the unrestricted net position component. And in your letter, you requested that that section of the statement not include the capital asset section of net position. So my question for you, Joe, is how do you propose that we would provide users with information to assess capital asset needs of a government without that component of net position included?
Well, that's a great question, and I do think that, first of all, I'm so grateful that we have the unrestricted net position, because, you know, from the way I view a budget, that's the more important number. And I have to admit, I'm not sure the best way to do that. I would leave it to the experts. But just in my casual review of the budget, when I look at the total net position, someone had to explain to me, "Hang on, Joe, hang on, that's not the number that you should look at with your view of, through your lens, you should really look at the unrestricted net position." It took me years to find that out, and if that were somewhere, if there was a way to make that easier to the taxpayer and to the way I view things, then of course, I'd like that, but I don't know exactly how a CPA would do that.
Maybe we can discuss that further on a beach in Hawaii at some point.
My ties. That's right.
I think Lisa's offering to come, come out to Hawaii and teach an educational session for taxpayers.
Oh, I'd love it.
The governmental fund reports. All right, Chris.
Joe, thank you for meeting with us this morning for you and this afternoon for me. Appreciate you making the time. So, you know, I just want to better understand, you know, this issue or your thoughts around, around the best way to, and I apologize, I had my thought, it was one of those things that I was listening to Lisa, then the chairman cracked a joke and he kind of threw me off. I need a second to recompose my thoughts. I apologize.
Chris, since I caused that, you want me to ask a question?
Sure thing, please.
Okay. Sorry about that. I didn't mean, I didn't mean to be funny. So, Joe, you, in your comments and in your letter, you talk about, in your comments in particular, you talked about Hawaii issuing debt to pay for salaries. In the proposal, we have an exception for the governmental funds that we've carved out, that we describe as long-term debt issued for short-term purposes. Now, without looking at the specifics of what this debt is, based on the surface of how you described it, sounds like it would probably meet that definition. Therefore, under the proposal, that would remain and be reported, that debt that was issued for that short-term purposes to pay a salary would remain as a governmental fund, a general fund, if that's the fund that issued it, liability. Does that sound like a good exception, a good thing for us to have included? Does that make sense to you? Do you find that helpful?
So you're saying that the money borrowed would be a liability and not an asset, correct?
Well, it wouldn't be an inflow. It wouldn't be a revenue or inflow.
An inflow, excuse me. Thank you.
It would, you'd have cash, right? And then you would pay it, I guess, but theoretically, you would start with cash and have a liability as opposed to an inflow, so it doesn't go into fund balance.
Well, that would, yes, be ideal, I think, if, if just, if there's any way to keep the bonds borrowed as revenue, a true financial picture of that so that it can be viewed as a liability, yes, that would be great. I was just confused myself as to how, I mean, we're still in, on fiscal 2021, I think, so we're still going to wait and see how they calculate that in our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think Chris, Chris is back.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, if you could hold your jokes, please, until after I finish. So thanks again, Joe, I appreciate you coming. So my question really revolves around this idea of these two statements that we have, and one, having more of a, you know, traditional accrual-based approach, you know, with economic measurement focus, and us taking this longer perspective view on the liabilities, the assets that are out there. And then this other one that, you know, many say is very much more like, more like how we budget, you know, relatively speaking, every state's different, budgeting processes are different, but a little bit more like it. Do you have any thoughts or concerns around the idea of making those, those fund statements more accrual, you know, traditionally accrual-like, Economic Resource Measurement Focus accrual-like, and the potential for, say, after a year or two of, say, a government not fully funding their ARC or something to that degree? What, you know, what do those statements then represent, right? You have some huge deficit in them, and do they really represent something that you find useful as a citizen and who you are in your everyday business, right? And so it makes sense when we look at it just from a one-year perspective, and I want to know if somebody did not fund their ARC, if somebody did not pay a certain portion of these longer-term liabilities, what that means to my budget in a sense. But you get to the point where after a year or two, because these are not connected, right? Governments are going to budget however they choose to budget and fund expenditures however they choose to. Governments are going to budget however they choose to budget and fund expenditures however they choose to fin. Fund them and then accounting is going to be accounting, right? And those are two separate things, you know, what are we left with? And are we left with something that you might find usable once you get a year or two out?
I see. Yeah, I, I see it kind of the, the other way around where the government fund statement currently is not usable to me. Because I, I know that there are all these liabilities and they're switching things around and they're swapping things and it's swirling and, and it's very confusing to me to try to follow that. And so if there was a broader look at what's going on, then I wouldn't go, get to the bottom line and, and, and see a big, a lot of money. So, well, at least in Hawaii, I hope I would see a lot of money, actually. But, but anyways, I do think that it would service the public better and, and our purpose is better to have all the, the numbers in there, even if that would be difficult. And I know that there's challenges if, if it swaps from this fund as that fund or if, or if we decide not to pay this or that in the long term and what does that mean? That's very difficult to get to the bottom of and, and they pay people a lot of money to figure that out.
Well, thank you for your answer and thank you again for joining us.
Hey, Joe, I think we've, we've used up all the time, but we really appreciate you joining us. We appreciate your perspectives, your insights. And, and, you know, we, we like when the non-accountants come and talk, talk accounting with us. So we appreciate it very much, your interest and, and you taking the time. So thanks, you, thank you.
Thank you. And everyone, aloha.